Good evening, everyone. Welcome to City Hall Council Chambers for tonight's reconvening of public hearing, reconvened from January 26th. It's now January the 31st, 2017. And I will call this meeting of council to order. Madam Clerk, may you have the roll call, please?
Robertson's in the chair. Counselor Louie is absent. Counselor Stevenson is absent from the chamber at the moment. Counselor Jang is on leave, medical leave. Counselor Reimer. Counselor Meggs. Counselor Ball is absent. Counselor Carr. Counselor Affleck is leave of absence for personal reasons. Counselor DeGenova and Counselor Stevenson has entered the chamber. Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. And again, welcome, everyone, for the reconvening of this public hearing. We met on January the 26th and heard from some of the speakers to item number four on the agenda for the public hearing. And tonight, we continue hearing from speakers on item number four, which is facilitating growth in Vancouver's innovation economy, Mount Pleasant industrial area amendments to the zoning and development bylaw. So before we begin, I'll just make the quick announcements for anyone here to speak tonight. Speakers have five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. Speakers should also state whether they support or oppose to the recommendations before council. And speakers may speak once. If they have further comments, they can hand them to the clerk in writing or mail them to mayorandcouncil@vancouver.ca. If you're speaking on behalf of three or more people or organizations, you get three extra minutes. But those who you are representing need to be here and not be speaking themselves. And you may have questions from council. If I will remind speakers, as we discussed the other night, that the comments should relate to the merits of the application, which is all about zoning and development bylaw, proposed changes. Matters that don't directly relate to that rezoning, such as leasing or any sale of specific properties, are not part of the rezoning process and therefore cannot be part of comments made to council tonight. So I'll ask Madam Clerk to read the updated summary of correspondence since we were last meeting.
The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing: 17 emails in support, seven emails opposed, and 180 emails related to other matters.
Okay, thank you. And we have Paula Huber here, who's a planner from Planning Urban Design and Sustainability to respond to questions that council sent to staff over the recess. So Ms. Huber?
Thank you, Your Worship. I don't have anything to add at this point. I think we made our presentation last time, so I believe that we could just hear from the remaining speakers. And I do have some answers that I want to provide at the end of the speakers as part of a summarizing comment.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you for that. I'll just check in with council if there are any other questions for staff before we go to the speakers' list. No questions? Okay, so we will pick up where we recessed, and that was speaker number 22, where we recessed on the 26th. So speaker number 22 is withdrawn since that time. So speaker number 23 is Victoria Khan. Victoria Khan here. Okay, doesn't look like we're going to have many of the speakers who are still on the list. Speaker 24 withdrawn. Speaker 25, Leanne Yan. Leanne Yan is not here. And speaker 26 is withdrawn. Speaker 27, Tony Van Su Guyen. Not here. Speakers 28 through 36 are withdrawn. So speaker number 37, Elon Suen, is not here. 38, 39 are withdrawn. 40 is Michelle Wong. Michelle Wong is not here. 41 to 45 are withdrawn. So speaker 46 is Leslie Wu. Leslie Wu is not here. 47 is withdrawn. 48 is Sophia Chow. Sophia Chow is not here. 49 through 53 are withdrawn. So speaker number 54 is Charlie. Charlie, not here. 55 is Winnie Ng. Winnie Ng is not here. Alice Yan Jiang is 56. Not here. 57, Mike Ma, is not here. 58 through 61 are withdrawn. 62 spoke on January the 26th. And 63 is Christina Kwan. Christina Kwan is not here. And 64 and 5 are withdrawn. 66 is Sharon Jo. Sharon Jo is not here. 67 is Jade Hu. Not here. And 68 through 75 have all withdrawn. And that is the end of the speakers' list, the registered speakers' list. So I will call three times if there are any other speakers here for item number four. Are there any speakers here for item number four? Zoning and development, Mount Pleasant industrial area. Last call speakers, new speakers for item number four. Seeing none, we will close the speakers' list. And as we've had no comments since 5:00 p.m. today or few, we will close a public comment period. And I will ask Ms. Huber to give some closing statement on behalf of staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a few slides intended to help reinforce, refocus the land use decision and provide a bit more background and context to fill in some of the gaps that were identified during the earlier public hearing. And while I go through this presentation, I'll provide answers to some of the questions that I received from council last week. Starting way back, in 2005, we started -- oh, hang on, we're not running yet. So in 2005, the city identified that we were facing a potential job space shortfall, and the MetroCore Jobs and Economy Study was launched. And that research led to the approval of MetroCore Jobs and Economy Land Use Plan in 2007. To address the shortfall in job space, new policy directions for the overall MetroCore area were identified along with specific subareas. And this slide shows sort of the different strategies for each of the individual subareas within the MetroCore area. In Mount Pleasant, the specific directions included strengthening the production, distribution, and repair function of that area, continuing to prohibit residential uses because residential use was nipping at the edges of all of the industrial areas. And we were also striving to increase the range of permitted service and office use. Zoning changes were made in Mount Pleasant in 2013 as a result of MetroCore, and we revised the mix of uses without displacing industrial functions in this area. Those changes unlocked a significant amount of zone capacity in this area and allowed for two FSR of office space that's independent of an industrial use in the building. These images on this slide are intended to show the transformation of building typologies and scales that is happening in the area as a result of the changes from 2003 and illustrates what could happen with the next increment under the new zoning proposed along Quebec Street. So if you look at the images on the left-hand side, you see the typical kind of low-scaled single-purpose buildings that dominate the Mount Pleasant area. The middle slide shows two newer buildings that have been built since 2013. And then the slides on the right show examples of massing of five FSR nearby. The bottom slide is the police building at the foot of the Camby Bridge. And the one at the top right is a new building very close to here on Broadway. Both of those are five FSR. They don't include industrial use, but they give you a sense of the scale about where we're going here. In 2013, zoning changes and other factors have led to a significant increase in land values and lease rates in Mount Pleasant. Assessed values from 2013 to 2014 went up by 30%. Between 2014 and 2017, assessed values have doubled. That's not coming right. There we go. Something's wrong with that slide. Well, it's not. You've seen this slide before, and it's in your report, so I'm not going to fuss with it. Suffice it to say that there are a number of innovation clusters distributed across the MetroCore area. Each cluster has its unique role and attracts a different part of the innovation economy. For example, in the downtown area, we have large corporate companies such as Telus, Microsoft, Amazon, Enrailtown, Launch Academy, Metaphor Software. And in Mount Pleasant, we have businesses that have been there for over 15 years, such as Image Engine, and newcomers like Hootsuite and Kitten Ace. These areas all have different zoning and different characters. Planning staff are working to create a more favorable regulatory environment to support and grow the innovation economy within each cluster. The specific response in each area needs to be customized to address the specific character and context of each cluster. The changes proposed in Mount Pleasant and Enrailtown are keyed to specific sectors of the innovation economy: digital in Mount Pleasant and creative uses and makers in Enrailtown. The Falls Creek Plan that's to come will build on its own role and context strengths. In the areas where the innovation economy is located, in an area designated in the regional context plan as industrial, the zoning changes must be respectful of the limitations imposed by the regional context statement. That is to say, industrial use must continue to be a requirement in the zoning. The proposed changes that we are discussing in Mount Pleasant will also replace outdated definitions for information technology and software manufacturing with new definitions. Staff are taking a focused approach here to create a specialized area for digital uses and larger-scale businesses. One of the questions we were asked was, why don't we do this everywhere here? And I would suggest that this is a very specialized approach with a targeted intention, and it should not be applied generally. The buildings within these new zones permit general office use up to two FSR, and then beyond that, an additional two bonus for tech and digital. So companies that feel that maybe they don't belong completely in the digital category could still be in a building here in the general office part of the building. So that's 50% of the office space in the building is very flexible, and 50% of it would be more tightly limited within the office market. A counselor asked whether staff were aware of the partnership between Hootsuite and West Bank when we initiated this work and whether we consulted with them as part of this work. Yes, staff were aware of the partnership, and the purchase of sites in this area was widely reported in the Globe and Mail and other media in 2015. Hootsuite is already in the brick building on the north side of Fifth Avenue. You're probably aware of it. It's the very large-scale, chunky building. Retaining Hootsuite and 550 local jobs is important to the city. There were discussions between Hootsuite and senior management at the city to discuss the future space needs of Hootsuite and to clarify the extent to which changes to zoning in this area could be considered within the parameters of the regional context statement official development plan, in particular, the need to continue to provide one FSR of industrial floor area. In response to a question about whether the mix of uses in this area will continue, I can reaffirm that all of the uses permitted in the existing I-1 zone today can continue to be allowed or will continue to be allowed in the new zones. As these are industrial zones, there are some restrictions on retail and service uses. A wide range of service uses are permitted, including dog daycare, that was one that was asked about the other day, and social services center, which is sort of compatible with what Light &amp; Love Home is doing. But most service uses are limited to one FSR. There's a restriction on the amount of that in order to minimize the impacts on job space. I think the zoning recognizes that some level of service is needed to support the workers in the area and the adjacent neighborhood, but it's not intended to be devoted to that. The density bonus contribution of $6 per square foot that is proposed for the I-1 area was based on an -- I'm sorry, I-1 area was based on an assessment of new childcare need resulting from the additional job space and the cost to provide childcare to meet that new demand. Black spot there. The proposed I-1B zone is a framework only that allows for a range of options about the future of the annex to be explored and evaluated and improves the financial feasibility of rehabilitating the annex at some point. Council is not being asked to make a decision about the development of the city's land or the annex today. The Simon Fraser Annex is a building that has been identified to have heritage merit, candidate for B-listing. Whether council approves these zoning changes or not, at some point, the city will need to rehabilitate the building or risk losing it. Even under the current zoning, the site is significantly underdeveloped. The existing building, the annex, is about 10,000 square feet on two floors. Under the current I-1 zoning, we could build a building that's about 90,000 square feet there. The lot's about 30,000 square feet, and it's three FSR. So on to a bit more background on the context, because we had a few questions around this. The proposed zoning changes are for blocks within the boundary of the Mount Pleasant plan. However, the plan does not include any specific policies and land use in this shoulder industrial area. So if you see on the slide, the red at the top is the Main Street strip, and there's this one block that we're talking about immediately to the west is actually in the boundary area, but there's nothing specific about it. The plan acknowledges that future decisions about this industrial area west of Main Street would flow from MetroCore Jobs and Economy Study and other economic policies and initiatives. The Mount Pleasant plan includes land use policies, urban design advice, and public benefit strategy for growth. The objectives of the plan were expected to be delivered through developer-initiated rezoning on a site-by-site basis, and nothing has happened yet, and that is why people are not seeing anything being realized on the street. This slide shows three sites that have -- hang on, is it three? Two that have been approved for rezoning and others that are proposed for rezoning. To date, two rezoning applications have been approved. One of these applications between Second and Third Avenue and the west side of Main Street includes a plaza, public plaza located off the lane. The other application at Seventh Avenue includes a pedestrian walkway and townhouses off the lane to help with activation of the lane. A third application is scheduled for public hearing in February. That application proposes a small public open space at the corner of Fifth Avenue, as well as townhouses and landscaping at the rear to help animate the lane. A number of other Main Street sites are in the rezoning inquiry stage. Staff will continue to include design features and secure amenities in these projects to reflect the objectives of the community plan. I'm going to just note here that there was a comment about mid-block passages from Main Street. Why that wasn't happening? That idea was considered during the discussion of the plan, but the final plan did not include those mid-block connections because the blocks here are so short, and it was determined that animating the flanking streets and wrapping onto the avenues was a better opportunity to animate streetscapes leading to the lanes. And I believe I have answered the council questions as part of that presentation. And I'm available for any others.
Okay, thank you very much. You got a couple of questions, starting with Counselor Reimer.
Not only answered, but anticipated a bunch that I might have asked, but you -- I was -- the last section, actually, on public realm and the post-plan, how that implementation would happen, which, of course, wouldn't be at a rezoning in any event, but to get a better sense. The only question I have left is, will you be posting your answers online so that it's available to the public? I guess it's available as part of the video record, but if there was a -- the PowerPoint, I assume, will go online.
Yes, that would be online, but we can figure out some way to make sure that those answers are -- or that information's in there.
Yeah, I think without the narrative, it may not make as much sense, given the
Correct.
latent interest in some of these answers. I think it'd be great to have it online. And I have no more questions, although I will be, as if folks would like a preview. I had intended to move referral to the council meeting, so I will do that after the questions are done, or attempt to do that.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Carr, questions?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Ms. Huber, for your summary and inclusion of answers to my questions. I believe you answered the bulk of my questions, but there's just a few that I want to go over. Maybe they were in there, but you were pretty quick. So just wanting to verify. The second question I asked was to respond to the point raised by one speaker that some definitions are too restrictive. This is the person who said allowing an extra two FSR office space if the use is 100% digital and said when the reality is that companies are not 100% digital, like they're just -- they don't exist. So is this not too restrictive a zoning requirement?
Counselor, I talked about how the current bonus right now, you can have two FSR of general office. That means anything can go in that two FSR today. What we're trying to do is bonus specifically for digital and tech, which today is 30% or more of the office, of those looking for leases in the office market. So yeah, it is limiting. I don't think any business is just one kind of thing. Like, we use -- we have big tech components, but we're not a tech firm. So I would say, yeah, we are doing it deliberately, and it is narrower.
So does it -- I'm sorry, maybe then to rephrase it. I think the person was concerned that for the bonus space, that space had to be 100% digital. Is that correct?
The space needs to be used by a digital company, but you just need to meet the qualifications. I mean, companies change, and their focus may flow, but in the end, I think you're still a digital company or you're not. If you completely change your business model, and you -- I mean, that happens, right? Companies change, and then they don't belong in the zoning any further. I guess that's what the concern was.
Right.
However, as long -- if you take one -- a building that's five FSR, four of that is office, half of it's wide open for any kind of office use, and the other half would be constrained to digital or tech. I think there's quite a bit of fluidity in that.
Okay, okay. I understand your answer, and I think there may be a misinterpretation of the strictness of the rule.
Possibly.
So maybe --
Possibly.
Otherwise, the question wouldn't have come from a speaker. Okay. Another question is that I had that I didn't hear the answer to, but I'm not saying -- because I say you covered a lot in your presentation. What is the status of the Mount Pleasant Community Plan Implementation Committee? And did you have any kind of direct consultation with members of that committee?
Yes, I checked into that, and apparently, there was a report in 2013 that came to council, and it was discussed that due to staffing resources, we couldn't continue to support that implementation group, but if they were encouraged to continue meeting on their own to discuss implementation and have, for whatever reasons, have chosen not to do that. So we did not meet with an implementation group because I don't believe that there is an active one.
Okay, that's great. Thank you for that. Another question. Was there analysis done of how the public amenities share, $6 per square foot, as in the report, for increased density and height compares to the kind of profits or the expected generation of extra revenue profits for the companies? I mean, the 6%, in other words, is that a fair return for public -- to the public for the extra density?
Counselor Carr, we're trying to shift from a land lift approach to a -- when we do density zoning, we're supposed to try and deliver a need that arises directly from the growth. And so what we did in this case is we looked at how much new job space was going to be provided, how much employees that would generate, what that need was for childcare, and then factored that across the floor area, rather than looking at a land lift approach.
We could talk more at some other time, I think, about the different way in which this approach materializes compared to the land lift, which you're used to at the council table. Okay, and my final question that I was really around that last point you raised. How do the proposed public amenities, which conclude childcare, compare to the public amenities prioritized in the Mount Pleasant Community Plan?
Childcare is one of the top priorities in the Mount Pleasant Plan. I do have -- I can just grab one. Not sure if I have it right here, but there were a number of plazas identified in the plan and childcare and affordable housing, so it is tied in. I mean, this is additional, so it's beyond the items that were included in the public benefit strategy for the Mount Pleasant Plan.
Okay, and the plazas, you said, or the public realm improvements are going to come in a different way than in that alleyway linking to Main, correct? That priority within the public benefit strategy of the plan?
The public benefits would -- the public realm improvements will be delivered on a site-by-site basis as sites develop. But certainly, we're looking for wider sidewalks and street trees and a more tractable streetscape. And even though the industrial area wasn't targeted for those improvements as part of this work, these new zones, we were trying to carry that approved public realm into the industrial area by introducing new building setbacks that aren't part of the requirement of the I-1 zone today. And in particular, we're asking for a 10-foot setback from the lane common with Main Street so that we can create a more open lane to help with that activation. That was a goal from the plan.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's good.
Hi there. I had a question, actually, follow-up from Counselor Carr's question. You had talked about, and I understood, that when we are looking at something like this in a holistic approach, we can't really be looking at land lift. We've got to be looking at that sort of as we move forward with each project, because that actually could fetter council's decision in looking at something like this. That being said, I don't see any legal staff here, so I'm not going to ask that question. What I will ask is, you mentioned you were talking about the considerations for new job space and for new jobs in the area. And I'm just wondering, aside from the affordable housing in the area, was there any calculations or metrics that you could provide us with in terms of how close those jobs would be to affordable housing? What we've heard here from several companies, I mean, over several months, and what we hear sort of from individuals who email mayor and council at Vancouver.ca is Vancouver is increasingly unaffordable, and it could be the difference between head office, like a Hootsuite, moving here or to another major city in Canada. So could you elaborate, or would staff be able to elaborate on the proximity to affordable housing and how this may have an impact on the job space?
Counselor, we didn't look at that question in any detail. This strip along Main Street is closer to a large neighborhood, like a residential neighborhood. I think the bigger question about housing affordability for workers is a big issue that we're working on on a number of fronts, and I think the answer to that is going to come over time.
Follow-up to that would be, it would be interesting to see that information or those metrics when you have them. I understand that at one time, there was first responder housing that was offered in the Olympic Village in close proximity to the, I suppose, to the different organizations that the first responders would work for, but it was unsuccessful, and there certainly weren't waiting lists. We had empty units for the reason that the metrics and the rents were off. So I'd just be interested to know if that would impact the situation of a company who perhaps couldn't find workers that lived in close enough proximity. We don't always seem to have that happen, but it's something that I know we're grappling with more and more as we deal with housing affordability. So if you could provide those numbers when possible, that would be great.
Sure, I'll do that. Sure, I'll do that.
Okay, and I believe that's all your questions. Councillor Reimer, do you have questions or a motion?
Motion.
Okay, no more questions. We'll go to next steps. Thanks, Ms. Huber. Councillor Reimer?
Thank you, Mayor Robertson. I would move that we refer this as unfinished business to the February 7th council meeting. My main rationale is that, as noted by Ms. Huber in both her broad comments and the specific answers to questions, it is, this is linked in to decisions that will have already been referred there, and I think it would behoove us to consider them both at the same time at the public, or at the council meeting on February the 7th.
Okay, and a second for that. Someone want to, councillor Carr? Okay, and anyone want to speak to referral motion to our next council meeting for debate and decision? No takers. So we will go to a vote on the referral motion. Councillor De Genova, you vote? We have eight votes, all eight votes in favor of referring this item for debate and decision to the February 7th council meeting as unfinished business. And that means we have concluded this public hearing, and we will be back on this specific issue on February the 7th. Thanks to staff, and thanks to all those involved on this item in particular for your input, and we'll look forward to next steps on February the 7th. And that concludes the public hearing, so we need a motion to adjourn. Councillor Carr, second for that. Councillor Deal, all those in favor of adjournment. Any opposed, that carries. This public hearing is adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Have a great night.